Thank you. I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:01 PM. Will now take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I don't believe we have any students here tonight for... So Alan, you're our video guy tonight, right? Well, thank you for being here tonight, Alan. We need to... Okay. Alright, so let's call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mr. Rollins?
Mr. Scavano?
Here.
Mrs. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Segal?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Escobedo. With five present, two absent, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Now we'll move on and recognize and celebrate outstanding contributions of our students and staff. Mr. Earl Dotson Jr., you're up.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board members. Tonight, we are always excited when we have students and staff and families with us to celebrate some of their outstanding accomplishments. And tonight, we're recognizing some state competitors. So up first, we have Mr. Kodai Spike. He's just becoming a regular superstar, isn't he? Represented RPS 205 in the Boone, Winnebago region for the third time at the Scripps National Spelling Bee in Washington DC. I just need to finish. That's great applause. He correctly spelled dirigible? Dirigible in the second round and decryption in round three. But he did not make it to the preliminaries. Kodai just completed eighth grade at Thurgood Marshall. Congratulations. Let's give him a round of applause again. We go from the spelling bee to the Thurgood Marshall School's ultimate frisbee team. The Marshall Middle School Ultimate Frisbee Team won first place in the state championship in May. The team, which has played together for four years, won all four games in the state contests and accumulated the most points of any team competing in their division. It is the only organized ultimate frisbee team in Rockford for middle or high school students. According to Coach Tom McNamie, we want to say congratulations to the Thurgood Marshall School's ultimate frisbee team. Congratulations, Thurgood Marshall. In the boys' class 3A tournament for IHSA Track and Field, Jefferson High School's John Funchess qualified to compete in the state tournament for the long jump. Guilford High School's Kevin Polk qualified to compete in the state tournament in the triple jump. And he finished sixth in the state. Congratulations to these two gentlemen, Kevin Polk and John Funchess, for qualifying at the state track and field. And we understand, we appreciate everyone being here. We know it's summertime and school is out for the summer, but we appreciate everyone who made it here today. In the girls' class 3A tournament, Guilford High School's Crystal Mathis qualified to compete in the 200-meter dash. Crystal will continue her athletic career at the college level playing basketball at Parkland College. Auburn High School's Alexandria McCoy qualified again this year in Shotwood. She will continue her track and field career at Southern University in Baton Rouge. Let's give it up for Crystal. IHSA boys tennis in doubles play, Will Snediger and Wyatt Morris and Guilford's Adam Gesmer and Alejandro Alvarez both lost in their first rounds. Guilford's team also lost in their second round, while Auburn's team won the second round and fell in the third round of tough competition. In singles play, Auburn High School's Titus Metzler and Quentin Navenhoven took turns playing number one singles for the Auburn Knights and finally faced off at the Class 2A Harlem Sectional. Titus won the sectional championship over Quentin. And they both were able to compete again at the IHSA Class 2A Boys State Tennis Tournament in singles play. At the tournament, Titus and Quentin both won the first and second rounds. It wasn't until the next day of the tournament that Quentin lost in the third round and Titus lost in the fourth round, respectively. In the consolation bracket, Quentin won his fourth and fifth rounds and the team took 10th overall in the state. Congratulations to the Auburn Knights. Alright, from Eisenhower. Imone Johnson, Connor Sherman, Julian Arce, George Curry, and my man.
I met him tonight.
There he is. There he is. George Curry and Owen Dahlberg competed in the eighth grade boys 4x100-meter relay team. Karyana Curtis, Jaleen Craig Ingram, Anastasia Bruce, Jolena Sight, and Hallie Dunaway competed in the eighth grade girls 400-meter relay. Anastasia Bruce and Jolena Sight competed in the seventh grade girls 100-meter dash. Audrey Ryan competed in the seventh grade girls 400-meter dash. Owen Dahlberg competed in the seventh grade boys 200-meter dash. Just give it up for these IESA track and field middle school scholars. Alright, I do know the Kennedy coach, this is from Kennedy Middle School. I know that some of their players can be here, but the coach was here and was able to receive the certificates. But the Kennedy girls JV 400-team took first place at the girls' track and field sectional and they took 11th in the state tournament. Congratulations to Jolene Williams, Marsha Vaughn, Brianna Manning, Sierra Esper, and Alexa Gonzalez. Kennedy's Denija Benford took second place at sectionals in varsity shot put, which qualified her for the IESA state tournament. For the boys' team, Jaquan Brady took first place at sectionals in the shot put, giving him the chance to compete in the state tournament where he took second place. Congratulations to Kennedy Middle School and their scholar athletes. They're not here. Alright. Okay, thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Next up, we have Flynn Middle School. Flynn brought home four medals, plus a medal for a relay team. Michelle Gazmon placed seventh in the 800-meter run. CJ Berry placed fifth in the long jump. Hunter Scanlon placed third in the shot put. And first in discus, earning two medals. Yeah! Jacob Watson, Jeremiah Crawford, DJ Jefferson, and Zaire Sherman placed fourth in the 4100 relay. As a team, Flynn's eighth grade boys finished in fourth place, marking the school's highest finish ever. They missed third place by only two points. Also, Bryson Bellock won the sectional in the 200-meter relay. And Markarius Luster also won the sectional, which took first in the 200-meter relay. Let's give it up for Flynn Middle School and their scholar athletes. Go ahead, go ahead. You know, we're okay here. We're all family. Go ahead and say that. Go ahead.
Alright. I also want to point out that Hunter Scanlon is the first kid ever in Rockford, Illinois, to be invited to USA Hockey Camp, which he goes to Iowa State University on Sunday.
Alright, other IESA track and field state competitors. West Middle School's Deonte Meadows competed in the eighth grade boys' long jump. Lincoln Middle School's Innocent Natuwamara competed in the seventh grade boys' long jump. Thurgood Marshall School's Marley Adam competed in the eighth grade girls' 200-meter dash. Let's give it up for these other state competitors. Alright, and last but certainly not least, Jefferson High School Special Olympics. Jefferson High School Special Olympics team had a great run at the Spring Games in May. Two students, Grant Walter and Victor Martinez, qualified for the state competition June 9th through the 11th. And we will update the results after the tournament because it was held very recently. But I do believe we have some representatives here. Let's give it up for the Jefferson High School Special Olympics team. We have an update from the parents. Thank you. Took third in state. Took third. Alright. Alrighty. And so, it would only be right if we would certainly take a moment to give a round of applause to all of the teachers and the staff and the coaches who help support these students. Let's give it up for those folks. And certainly, let's give it up for the parents. The parents. Alrighty. Next up, we have the information about students who are here, who are accepted into the RU Pathway program. The district is committed to supporting as many as 20 scholarships for a partnership through Rockford University for our graduates to pursue a teaching degree through Rockford University. The first group of students is being recognized here tonight. These 2017 graduates will attend Rockford University in the fall and study teaching. They will do their student teaching in our schools and they will have a job and will have a priority for a job in RPS 205 when they receive their degree. Once hired, they can work to receive a master's degree in urban teaching from Rockford University for free. So congratulations to these students. We are thrilled about your investment in education and your investment. And Charo does not want to read the names, so I guess I'm going to read the names. Are you sure? Since you're so instrumental in this, go ahead, Charo. Go ahead. I'll let you go ahead and recognize those folks.
Thank you. I know several of our students were on vacation, so they are not here, but we would still like to recognize them anyway. Elizabeth Melanchik, Lance Rotert, Natalie Sales, Gretchen Stark, Joseph Miskevich, Isabella Camacho, Alyssa Reyes, Chandler Growth, Jasmine Chavez, and Hunter Kelly.
Yes, I'm good. That's what I was going to say.
We would also like to take a moment. We have Jeff and Shelley Shin Foundation created a scholarship. And every year, one of our Pathway students will also be a recipient of the scholarship. Today, I'd like to recognize our first recipient of the Jeff and Shelley Shin Foundation scholarship, and that is Hunter Kelly right here. Thank you.
Alrighty. Thank you, sir. That is all. I'm sorry?
We could have Jeff and Shelley real quick, please.
Yeah, what is the scholarship?
Oh, a little explanation on what the scholarship is?
Tell us about the scholarship.
Okay.
If basically we could, I'd like to invite Jeff and Shelley Shin to the microphone real quickly for recognition. Come on up, guys. I just wanted to give a little bit of background. Jeff and Shelley, Shelley's a longtime Rockford Public School teacher. They're deeply committed members of our community and they reached out and said, hey, how can we help? And we have this really wonderful innovative program. And they came up with a way to make what I thought was a really exciting opportunity for kids even better. So if you wouldn't mind just sharing a little bit about what you're doing to help students in our district. We're so appreciative.
Well, we decided, we were fortunate enough to have a foundation where we could give back to the community. And having Shelley been a teacher and retired as a Rockford school teacher and with all of her entire career, we thought it would be a good idea to try and find some good students to be able to sponsor. So it's our wish and our desire, this is the first one, that we will have a student every year going forward. And those students will have the scholarship not just for one year, but for up to four years. And then there will be, at one point then, as we phase it in, there will be four students, so one student every year. There will be recipients of a four-year scholarship.
Okay. Thank you all. I mean, I could do this stuff all night, you know? Okay, so thank you all for coming. We're going to now move on to our petitions and communications portion of our meeting when we invite the public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during this petitions and communication portion of our agenda. According to Board Policy 2.230, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to a total of 30 minutes. The Board will not respond to comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you'll be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. In order to allow sufficient time for the business of the Board and to conduct our meetings in an efficient and effective manner, we are requesting that you comply with the guidelines that are posted. And each speaker will be allowed no more than two minutes to address the Board. It's not appropriate to address individual Board members or individual administrators or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. I will call two names, one who will be the first speaker to speak and then the person who will be next. Please come to the front so we can devote the most time to our comments. You'll have a clock on the wall here to help you with your two minutes. We thank you for your interest and your cooperation with our guidelines. So our first speaker tonight is Javier Guerrero, to be followed by Dawn Granath. And if you could turn the microphone on there.
It's on.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Javier Guerrero and I'm holding a Visiting International License valid for three years. It is my wish to continue working for this district. Last August, the Human Resource Department agreed to sponsor me with an H1 visa. It's valid for up to six years. We started the process in October. And this year, in April, we had a meeting and the school district decided to stop processing our visas due to the current political situation. But the visa H1B has never been canceled. And that, in order to get it, we could wait waiting for months. And they encouraged me to sign a letter of resignation because in this way, I would be able to work in RPS in the future. But that's in the future, but what about now? Fact, does the district need bilingual teachers? Yes, it does. Fact, have all the bilingual positions during last academic year been fulfilled? No, they have not. Still, they want to get rid of us without wanting to wait. Fact, there have been precedents where the district has waited teachers for several months. In one case, they waited until April. Fact, could this issue about getting the new visa have been solved if the first meeting had been one week earlier? Yes, I could have been able to enter in a lottery process with any other district. The meeting was in April 4th and the day to enter in the lottery process was April 3rd. And that news was devastating. My girlfriend got the new visa with other districts and now she will stay here and I have to go back to Spain because the district where I have been working for three years, that's not kind of me anymore. That's how I feel. Despite of all the facts mentioned before, despite of the fact my evaluation has been excellent, I know how to work here and here, and I do not need to be trained like a new one. My principal, other teachers, families, students, and the community support me. And that's my wish. I would like to continue working for the district and I would be very grateful if you could have this issue into consideration. Thank you for your time and interest.
Thank you, Mr. Guerrero.
Thank you.
Dawn Granath, to be followed by Margot Olson.
Good evening. I'm Dawn Granath, President of the Rockford Education Association. First of all, I want to express appreciation to the school board and administration for how engaged you've been with teachers regarding cleaning service contract and how hard you've been listening to REA leaders communicating feedback from teachers. We understand that the Board of Education is looking at a couple of options with regard to cleaning services for our schools. In that regard, let's be crystal clear about one thing. The performance of the current service, GCA, has been very, very weak. REA leadership has heard constantly from the REA rank and file about problems with cleanliness and other physical aspects of schools that GCA is responsible for. We've also heard a great deal about GCA's lack of responsiveness to repeated communication about cleaning issues from those that are in the building. REA leaders, Margot Olson, who is the leading building champion, Kate Rehack, and Jay Larson... REA leaders, Margot Olson, who is the leading building champion, Kate Rehack, and Jay Larson, have been working hard to accurately convey REA members' experiences and frustrations with GCA, the administration, and even directly to School Board members. Whatever option the School Board goes for, it is our understanding that any new contract will include heightened accountability, a tight leash for the cleaning services provider based on the teacher feedback on a frequent and ongoing basis. Both of the options being considered have benefits and drawbacks, yet with the tight leash, either option will be a huge improvement. That will be important for teachers, more importantly, it'll be good for kids.
Thank you, Dawn. Margot Olson.
Hello there.
Hi.
Uh, the REA, on behalf of our students and our teachers, would like to thank you in advance for listening to concerns about the cleanliness of our schools. For two years, the REA has loudly expressed major concerns about GCA. I would like to express how we appreciate your listening and any actions taken to improve the environments that our children live, learn in. They live there too practically. I am greatly upset over the amount of complaints generated about the lack of schools being clean. The majority of the complaints I receive are about reoccurring issues. Unfortunately, it takes many complaints to get things cleaned or even taken care of. Complaints consist of dirty, urine-smelling bathrooms, which also can contain large amounts of lime and mold. Fossils, floors, and walls have been known to have blood in them for a few days or longer, even after GCA has been notified of such. Lime is also seen by any faucet or any water fountain. Managers have stated to the porters, don't worry about cleaning this school so well over summer, it's closing in a couple of years. But you know, dirt is dirt. Day porters have been observed playing basketball and Candy Crush also during working hours. They're getting pretty good at it. Carpets are filthy, vacuums either don't work or the GCA porter has not been trained on how to use the different models. When the vacuum bag is full, GCA has told employees to slice open the bag, empty it, and staple it back together again so it can be reused. Windows in hallways have had tape residue on them since the spring of 2016. It's still there. All of these issues and more have been reported to downtown, who checks things out and reports them to GCA porters and managers. I have been building Champion Lead for two years. I'm spending about three to five hours per week on GCA cleaning issues. I shouldn't have to do this and neither should any other district employee have to watch over the job that GCA does. I'd like to ask, where's the pride of the GCA company and the employees? What about a work ethic? How many times do principals, teachers, and building champions complain before the schools are cleaned as they should be? Why do district personnel have to babysit this company? REA teachers and our students appreciate your listening and I promise to be even more diligent in reporting cleanliness issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Margot. Uh, any Board member comments at this time? I have one. I would just like, um, we get to do so many special events at the end of the year, but we just did the retirement dinner for several of the staff and several Board members were there and Dr. Jarrett and I both got to talk. Um, and I know there's one retiree sitting in the back, back there, okay? So, but, um, is, are there two back there?
I said, two more meetings.
Two more meetings, okay. So, I, I want to thank our staff and, um, I, I would like to, I know he's not here, but on behalf of the Board, I would like to thank Mr. Wilson for the great job that he has done in running our Transportation Department. Um, tire, tireless energy for, um, the transportation safely of our, our kids and, uh, making sure that buses start when they're supposed to and they're safe and all that. And he's, for me, he's been just a pleasure to work with. He's a true gentleman, um, good listener, and I, and we will miss him greatly. So, thank you to all the retirees, okay? Okay, we'll move on then to we, uh, we are now at the consent portion of our agenda, including the following. Meeting minutes of May 23rd, payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, construction bid pay request log, contracts under 10,000, and travel. Uh, the I, uh, the custodial services, uh, which is Item 8A. Um, and then on to Item 9, the recurring contracts for allied benefit systems for the retiree plan administrator, the first addendum to consulting agreement, comprehensive human resources services, the AT&amp;T Long Distance Service, the Intervention Development, um, LLC, and a whole slew of contract-certified speech and language pathologists, including Adams Heath, Hanson, Losini, Miller, Opperman, Pick, ProCare, Therapy Care, Voc- Vocal Vision, Sunbelt, and Vocal Vision Sunbelt, JC and MR. The other consent items, including the builder's risk insurance renewal, the special issue of public, of public official bond, quarterly treasury report, local 1275 collective bargaining agreement, the prevailing wage resolution, and the Freedom of Information Log. Is there a motion and a second to approve these consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Are there any consent items that Board members wish have pulled for separate consideration?
8A.
Mr. Connor, 8A. Any others?
10D.
10D. Ms. McCullough?
Looking for a number. Give me the, the one under, the under 10.
Oh, 7F.
Thank you.
Contracts under 10,000, okay. Okay. So then I will, um, have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the consent items not pulled.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes as five yeses and two absent.
Okay, we'll now, uh, move on to the item 7F, is the contracts under 10,000. Can I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Questions or discussion? Mrs. McCullough.
I can't leave it open. So the, um, there's two of them that are addendums. One's 8,000 and something, I think the other one's 8,000, they're both at the high end. Yeah. Um, could, so all it says, addendum to, yeah, all it says is addendum to previously approved board contract. And so, I have two questions about it. First of all, just enough information to know what contract we're addending, am I am I addending to? And I apologize for not sending this to Administration ahead of time, I don't mean to catch you on the fly, but the second piece is a legal question and that is if, if we already have a contract with someone and we're doing an addendum, is under 10K the right place for it or do we do an addendum as part of a consent agenda?
Mrs. Holtley.
Sorry, I was just looking at what contracts they, they are. If it's under 10, it still has to come to, and the extra amount would push it over 10,000, it has to come to you for approval. So, um, I'm not sure what's going on with Kate Kilgore or Pam Peterson. I see the two you're looking at. Um, but anyways, under our process, you have to approve anything that would be cumulatively in any given school year over, um, $10,000.
Right, and that's kind of why I'm asking the question, when it's already at 8. Do we know what the, the other piece was? And I, it's just kind of just to double check.
I, I don't know that it would have been approved by you on 8, 9 of 2016 for 8,000. So I don't know what this is the additional.
All it would have been is for 2,000, right? All it would have been is 2,000 if we're adding 8.
Right, and I don't know what that looks like. I think Kate Kilgore, if I'm recalling correctly, and I think Ms. Cyrus is back there, I think it wasn't a change in the amount, it was a change in the date, is that correct? Yeah, there was, there was somebody that we just approved where it was, um, they, they were supposed to complete it May 31st and instead are completing it June 30th, and so that wasn't any additional sum. So they might have just put the total, um, contract amount, that might be Ms. Kilgore. Pam Peterson, I don't recall anything about her.
Nikki, do you know? You look like you know.
Yeah, I have the, um, recurring contract from August 9th, 2016, last year. It's for a federal arts grant, um, in the amount of 47,400, um...
So if you add 8 to 47,400?
She's an instructional coach and, um, the, it was approved, teaching artists from schools. Is it just her? Because it looks like before it was under 10,000, the documentation attached to it.
Was under 2,000?
Under 10,000.
So it was already under 10 and now we are adding 8,000 more and the under 10, when if it passes 10, it should come to us? Yeah, but, I mean, is it, do, is there a timeliness to it because?
There's nobody here that can speak to it. We can pull these two. So amended to just be from Lamar, Lamar, Robert, Jeffrey Pope, and George Rush.
Okay. We need to, that is part of the motion or?
We can, we can pull.
Can't we, can't we do the three that aren't in question?
That's what I asked, so. So amended?
Yeah, amended.
Um, I move to amend to exclude the two, um...
Kilgore and Peterson.
Kilgore and Peterson, line items.
Second, seconded by Mr. Dixon. Any discussion on that amendment? Okay, now we need to have a vote on the amendment.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
The motion passes as five yeses and two absent.
Okay. Do we need a new motion or we need a vote on the? Okay.
Ready?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
All right, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes as amended with five yeses and two absent.
Okay, uh, the next item pulled is Item 8A. Um, Mr. Connor?
I move that the Board of Education reject the GCA contract.
Our second to that motion?
Second.
Mr. Dixon, seconds. Questions or discussion? Mr. Segal.
What evidence, evidence do we have, concrete or anecdotal, that another vendor solves our cleanliness issues?
Mr. Schmidt, you want to take that one? Not really, do I? Okay, no.
As we go with the custodial contract, the only evidence that we can guarantee is that we are going to adhere to the specifications in the contract or the bid specifications and make sure that we hold whatever vendor that the Board does approve for us, that will hold them accountable and make sure that they follow everything in the specifications that we've created.
Dr. Jarrett?
I think we heard from some RIA partners, uh, some principals at a meeting we scheduled on Friday, prior to the meeting to review, and also at the Operations Committee, a great deal of, of feedback. Um, I think there were some mixed reviews. Ultimately, um, this is going to be a very, very, would be a very, very tight timeline to move forward, uh, but there were some, there were concerns expressed, uh, at, at the meeting we called and at the Operations Committee meeting that laid out, um, a number of performance-based concerns, uh, as related to cleanliness, availability of supplies, and other aspects of a lack of follow-through as was exhibited by some of the public comments this evening.
I don't wish to seem unsympathetic to those who've had to deal with GCA over the years, um, but I'm just trying to, um, figure out what the best solution is. Would it be fair to say that GCA seems like the same vendor now that they did, say, two, three months ago? Because it seems like they have undergone, um, a particular scrutiny that has produced a, a tangible action plan, uh, come up with a plan for accountability at the Board level, at the administration level, um, and I'm guessing even at the, at the, at the building level, that now that they have already been in the schools, they've undergone this scrutiny, have come up with some planned changes, that they are quite a different vendor than they were a couple of months ago?
On the personnel that they have staff, or the managerial staff that they have out there, yes, they are different from they are a couple of months ago. Um, over the last year, actually over the last two years, uh, some of the concerns that we've had with GCA is the constant turnover of their upper leadership team, where they brought somebody new in there, then we come to find out four months later, they're getting rid of that individual, bringing somebody new, and so it's a constant turnover, um, and that individual not relaying the, the feedback from the upper GCA management down to the individual custodians in the building. So basically, their staffing level is, yes, it is different now than it was a couple of months ago.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, I'm going to make one last comment.
Alright, okay.
I, I do happen to be, um, in a, a, think a very small minority of those who would wish to proceed with GCA, and I look at it from a probability standpoint. It's kind of like having three doors to look behind and there's game shows that are like this. You know, behind door number one is GCA as we have known them for the last however many years. We don't want to open that door. Behind door number two is a, a new vendor with a whole new set of unknown variables. We hope that they would be great. We've got an accountability plan for them. And we certainly hope that it would work out. Behind door number three is GCA with new conditions put upon them and I think as an acknowledgement from them that they have needed to make some significant changes and they've produced a concrete action plan that does that. And I think that now puts them into a class of being a responsible bidder and they are now, in the first year, significantly less expensive than any of the other bidders, or they have a lower cost, it's expensive, value is value. But I noticed that as the contract proceeds from one, year one to year five, the other vendors, their bid escalates from, uh, between 9 and 10%. GCA's escalation is about 2.5%. So, we might say, yeah, this, it's probably worth a bit of an investment this next year, it's only, what, a few hundred thousand dollars more, but by the time we get to year five, you're at 1.1 million and change additional for the next vendor. It seems like we should have some really concrete assurances that another vendor is going to just crush it. They're going to bring harmony in cleanliness to 205 in order to pay that extra money. And with the idea that we're probably going to be working with the same people, probably within a reasonably similar pay range, that the likelihood that we can get that concrete assurance from another vendor, in my head, seems really low. So that is my justification for being in support of, of GCA.
Mr. Connor or Ms. McCullough?
I would say to you that we have no evidence that GCA is going to improve their performance. GCA has said they're going to prove, improve their performance. They said that before, they said, we'll bring in a new, um, manager, we'll bring in a new manager, and they've done it repeatedly and we have not seen a change in their performance. And so, um, what my understanding is, is in large part is that they are unable to manage the people and so I, that is one area that I understand the other bidders have some better, um, outcomes and that is with how they manage staff, at least that's one of the questions I've asked. I personally am not willing to reward bad behavior, I'm not willing... I'm not willing to reward, reward poor performance. I do think that they've shown that they are not a responsible bidder by the repeat lack of follow-through, especially when concerns have been raised. There is more than enough photographic evidence, as well as a trail of email and written evidence that changes have been asked for and not, and they have not been seen to. So I think a responsible party would, we would have seen some change, you know, without any delta or with very little. And the contention that in the last two to three months, we really have only, as these bids came in and their bid was low, held their feet to the fire and said, well, really, if you're going to bid that low and we have, and you're the lowest bidder, are you really responsible? Oh, yes, we will be responsible because we will do A, B, and C. We don't know that they're going to do those things. I think that the other thing about the, the timing is, oh, just, I lost my thought anyways. I think that I do have an issue, my, my, one concern, I agree with you fiscally, it's a difficult decision. Is it worth the money to make the change? I also have a second concern is that is the timing of the change. There is a risk of having another vendor prepared in such a short period of time. July 1st is right around the corner. We know that operationally, will people be up and running? Fortunately, it is the summer, they're doing summer work, there aren't as many buildings that actually have students in them. I'm sure the contract will read such that all the summer cleaning has to be done before school starts, whether they bring people in from other areas. So if we go with another vendor, I am going to, that is, put, you know, a charge of the administration to make sure those things are taken care of and written into the contract. But I have to say that I'm very dissatisfied as a board member with our administration and the fact that we're in this 11th hour, oh my gosh, should we take the non-responsible bidder because they do a lousy job, but they'll at least be there in July? Or do we say, we really need to make a change and we might have to take a little bit of risk on timing while people get up to speed? And will our staff in our schools be understanding that there may be a delay in that happening, but we're doing our best to try to make their environment better? In some ways, I can justify the change in money or the additional costs because a clean, positive working environment ends up in a better teaching environment, and so I'm, if we're all about student achievement, I'm hoping that that will have some impact on student achievement, and I think that that's the investment we're making. Also, we're making an investment on the longevity of our buildings. If we have poor maintenance, we've seen buildings get into disrepair, and then we have to spend money to replace things that if they had been cleaned or taken care of, wouldn't have to be replaced. Look at the amount of time that we have staff. I will say that I understand as part of whatever company go with, now we're going to have to hire two additional supervisory staff for the nights to oversee buildings across, in the, at the nighttime, because there's no management, you know, on, onsite. You know, when we outsourced this contract, the idea was that, you know, the job would be done and they would manage their people, and we're going to be managing the people or at least supervising and determining whether the job is going to be done with any group that we're with. I also have a concern with the escalation and the annual basis. I don't know how much the additional bidders took into account that five of our buildings are going down, and so we'll need to look at that when the buildings close and we consolidate and move into a new building. I mean, it's, they, both of the buildings will be larger in scale, but certainly somebody will be able to take a look at that and see if, if we need to relook at the contracts because there is less space to be cleaned. I guess the other thing that really struck me that was discussed at the operations meeting was the turnover in staff that they have had. Somebody tell me, was it like 300%?
No, over 100%.
100, over 100% in their second shift. To me, that again is a management. I don't know where GCA is going to go out and suddenly get great managers when they told us they're bringing in better people a couple of times now. So if you can't keep your staff, we've seen what happens with turnover and learning curve and, you know, just pride in what you're doing and pride in ownership of your building and relationships. So for all those reasons, again, I'm going to say to you that I'm not going to reward poor performance by awarding another contract or voting to award it and, or, you know, the, the behavior on the part of administration for putting us up against a timeframe, I am, I am confident that they will come forward and figure out how to make this work with whatever decision the board makes, but I personally won't be able to support continuing with GSA for all those reasons.
Mr. Connor?
First, I'd like to thank the board and the teachers and the principals, the administration for coming together and tackling the difficult issue, and appreciate all the feedback, all the hard work that's gone into all the discussions, and I know the board members have spent a lot of time, so I'm appreciative of that. The first item that I'd like to do is address some guidance from my point of view, having talked to all the board members. One is that the approach of having oversight built in to whomever is chosen is critical, whether it's the same exact details that are there now. I think having regular sessions, both with teachers and staff, principals and administration, is a terribly important part of the discussion, as well as having transparent and regular sessions with the Operations Committee. So I really want to encourage that as the basic approach to make sure that we don't get in that situation again. The other part of the guidance is like to make sure that the administration does this as soon as possible. This is a difficult task, and I, I think we all understand and appreciate that, but as soon as we can get to that, I think that's something that we'd all like to see. Next would be just a few comments from my point of view. From the management standpoint, what I can say is that sometimes there is a trust that's broken, and getting a fresh start makes a difference. And one of the things that I think we're hoping to do with this, quite honestly, is to reach out to teachers, reach out to staff, and from that standpoint, reach out to principals and administration and say that this is a new day and we have to set new standards, and there has to be a level of cooperation in that it's my personal hope that we use this as an opportunity to improve in a lot of other areas, and that this is a starting point for us all to work together, because the accountability, if I might say so, is on all of us. I said out loud at Operations, and I'll say again, that the falling down on this really belongs to all of us, because this has been an ongoing issue for a long time. I'll say personally, I can say I should have pressed harder earlier, and so I think there's a joint accountability for all of us to work together on this going forward. The other part is that timing is never easy, and I know the conditions on this are always not easy from my point of view to exactly plan. So again, I would say that's a shared accountability. I would say the last thing that I want to say on the management side is I don't think anybody can give a guarantee in that sense, and that's why, and I can't remember who said it, the older I get, and I'm getting old, is the more you trust process. And I think process is something that has been lost in this, and I think, and that's really because we've all been busy and heads down on a great many things, but this is important to pay attention to, and that the management side of this is, you have to have good processes in place. And one of the things, as was pointed out, we really are all going after the same workforce pool. There's absolutely no doubt. So how we approach investment in equipment, investment in process, and really investment in management is key to the success, and I think, if I might say so, that's where a lot of the confidence has been lost on the GCA side, is that they've been really, over a long period of time, I would have to say, if I can use this word guilty, of really not stepping up. And so at this point, it is time for a change, but I'd like to offer a challenge to all of us in this room, all the organizations we have, this is our opportunity to come together and show that we can plan and move forward as a group and make this successful.
Mr. Segal, I think you were next.
Yeah, sorry. I have to agree with Jude that cleanliness is something that is worth the investment. We have put together this really pretty beautiful facilities master plan where we are making some great additions and improvements to our existing schools, we're building two new schools, and it seems like the lowest barrier to keeping them nice is to keep them clean. And I would almost feel better if GCA's bid had come back and it was $1,000 less than the next company, and they still have this concrete action plan in place, because then I would feel like, well, they're within the market and they've got this plan and they're going to, you know, we can trust that they're going to succeed because they're well within the market. There is some reason that they are that much lower, and I'm not going to bother with the details of that, because I'm not sure I know them all. But it does seem like we have so much history with this vendor not succeeding at keeping our buildings clean, that if that had been such a priority to this board, that maybe assuring we were going to have the great cleanliness should have been a part of the facilities master plan, and now that it, you know, we've just all, all recognized and acknowledged publicly that the system has failed on cleanliness, we're now going to make this big addition to the facilities master plan to invest in cleanliness from companies that we don't know are actually going to deliver any better of a product. So I used to work for a company whose tagline was, if you can't tell the difference, why pay the difference? They changed it which to a much better slogan, but it's one.
Was there a new one?
There's a helpful smile in every aisle. So long as you asked. But it is, it is an idea that I do agree with, that unless we know we're going to get something better, and I don't, I haven't heard from a lot of conversation and inquiry that another vendor is going to provide a better level of service, other than what we might know from our, or think we know about our history with that particular vendor. So I'm, I'm not unwilling to go down the road of another vendor. I guess that means I am willing, and I'm willing to support the investment, but I want it to be pretty well established that there's a real possibility that another vendor, using the same people, paying in the same range, will not produce a dramatically better result. And if we come to the point where with this contract that allows us very liberally to cut ties with whatever vendor wins, we may see GCA back, and then, I can pretty much guarantee that whatever bid they put in at that time will be market-based. And I'm guessing with their knowledge of our district, they're going to find a way to be the lowest bid, but probably it's going to be a whole lot higher than it is right now.
Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, board. My question, I do have some concerns too, especially with the price. It was, it was less, the bid was less, but the problem I have is that even if we, because they were so terrible, we hide, we were saying that we're going to hire two supervisors, supervisor at night, which is going to eat up the cost of the bid, correct? Am I right?
Yes.
Okay. So if it eats up the bid of the cost, eventually, we pay it every year, and if we pay it every year, that's, that, that cost is going to eat up, is going to eat up what we're saying, saying that we're going to save. And so at the end, I believe that we're going to spend about the same much, because we have to, we hire somebody else to, we hired them to clean, to clean, but because they have been so awful, we, we, as we decide, we're going to hire somebody else to watch over them. And so my question is, where do we stand on that?
We stand on that no matter who the board selects for that. We, for our accountability and our quality control, we feel that we need to have some additional staffing out at night. Right now, we have a full-time custodial manager and part of the facilities manager oversee this contract during the day. There's really nobody on our staff that oversee it at night, so we want to ensure the quality of that, so we, we're going to recommend these two positions no matter who we choose.
I don't know if anybody's aware, or how many people are aware of this, but we as a board are. The, the lowball bid that they put in, and you're saying, yeah, they won't come back that low again, but they're coming in at 200, 6.3 instead of 6.5 that they're at this year, a million dollars. So if they're coming in at $200,000 less, but adding 11 FTEs, buying all these new backpack vacuums, buying all new mops, buying all new microfiber cloths, and they're saying they're just going to take it all out of their bottom line, they're not going to make as much money from us, and they can do that for five years is questionable. How long will they really be invested in, in, in trying to outperform? And I hear what you're saying about the learning curve on a, on a different company might not be as great, but built into this contract or any contract that we're putting forward will be a 60-day out clause without clause and a 30-day with clause. So if we find that we're not getting any better, and, and I hope that there's been a learning curve in terms of, there's been a couple people who've worked really hard at being a squeaky wheel, and it hasn't, it hasn't changed. I personally am not going to beat up the board, because we didn't go out and do something, because that's not our job. Our job was to forward information, concerns, problems, questions, and then administration come and say, okay, let's not renew, let's put it out for bid again, which, you know, eventually we got to that point. Should we have gotten to that point a year ago? Perhaps we should have, but I don't think that it's the board's job to say to administration, we want you to go do that. Maybe a conversation, an ops committee might have made a recommendation. I know, Mike, you had said that, and I can understand. And your comment about you, same pool of workers and they're going to be paying the same range, well, do we know that they're going to be paying the same range? Is that why, I mean, they have to pay, they have to start at the same range, right? Can they offer more?
Can I, can I answer that?
Yes, please.
Okay, so from my understanding, and I'm not sure about Alpha, but I know Aramark, or, I'm sorry, I'm not sure about Aramark, but Alpha is signatory to the SEIU agreement, which is the same as what we have currently with GCA. So that same agreement governs what they will pay employees. So yes, they would be paid the same. What would be difference is the management, and I don't know what the management would be paid.
Okay. And, but they can't pay them more then?
No.
No, they'd have to pay within the agreement. All right. I still, you know, for somebody who is already not responsible at doing, at doing the job that they have been tasked to perform and paid to do, by reducing their, their bottom line or what they're going to take, put in their pockets, I don't understand what the incentive for them is to do that for five years and, and really perform at a, you know, do a better job. So I, I just, I, I've already stated where I'm at, but I kind of wanted some clarification on that. Thank you.
Just my comment that I'd like to make before I get over there is that, I agree. I, I think that rewarding poor performance doesn't make a lot of sense to me, and based on GCA's track record, I, I'm not buying their promises that things are going to get better. I just don't buy that, you know? They've had plenty of time to fix things, and they haven't done it. And so to me, that's irresponsible. So, Mr. Segal?
Mr. Segal. I'll have the coordinator then. Any other comments?
Would you repeat what we're voting, how we're voting?
Where the, the motion, Ms. Fromm, would you read that? The motion is to reject...
The motion is to reject the bid.
So to clarify, if you say yes, then you're saying no to GS, GCA. If you say no, then you're saying yes to GCA.
Correct. Okay. Let's call a roll on the motion that's on the floor.
Mr. Segal.
This was going to happen. Wait a second. I'm saying no to GCA. I'm saying yes to...
To rejecting it.
To rejecting it.
Okay. That's what you mean.
You're voting yes, Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Sure.
Thanks, Jude, for... Yeah.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. Scavano.
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough.
Yes, no to GCA.
Okay.
The motion passes with five yeses, two absents.
Thank you all. The next one is item 10D. Can I have a motion to approve the local 1275 collective bargaining agreement?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Segal, second by Mr. Connor. Questions, discussions, or comments on item 10D? Mr. Segal.
I was asked by Member Rollins to express that had he been here tonight to vote, that he would have put forth his support for this contract.
Okay. Ms. McCullough.
And I would say that it's important to know that we, as a Board, have already voted once in favor of, when we implemented this contract, of, of the terms. And so at this point in time, for anybody who's wondering, we voted to implement it, and now we're voting that we have a contract with the union. Because on the first vote, the implementation didn't necessarily happen by both, it wasn't on both sides having voted for it.
Okay.
I only wanted to say...
Yes. Call a roll on the motion to approve item 10D.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. Scavano.
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough.
Yes.
Mr. Segal.
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, two absent.
Okay. We're now on to the closed session consent agenda items, including the appointment of Thomas O'Brien as a 10-month elementary dean, the appointment of Monica McWilliams as a 10-month elementary dean, the appointment of Jennifer Lack Keelman as a 10-month assistant principal, and the appointment of Caroline Muller as a 12-month dean, the appointment of Gary Coppa as a 12-month specialized administrator, the resolution to terminate probationary teacher and authorize appointment hearing officer and schedule hearing for Pedro Cruz, Elba Fernandez, Javier Guerrero, and Francis Robles, and the HR organizational report and addendum. It's our motion to approve the closed session consent items.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mr. Connor, second by Mr. Segal. Any questions or discussion? No. Any items that you'd like to have pulled?
Yes.
Do student discipline.
Oh, excuse me. I'm not done yet. Okay. And the closed session consent items, including the student discipline, unless otherwise modified below, the Board adopts and accepts the hearing officer's findings and recommendations of the following cases in which students expelled or suspended are prohibited from being on school grounds or school-sponsored activities with the prior written permission of the principal. Student 4078 is expelled through the first semester of 2017-18 school year, and the suspension is affirmed. And the following students have been given EIAs. Student 3257, 3295, 3296, 3297, 3298, 3299, 3300, 3301, 3302, 3303, 3304, 3305, 3306, and 3308. This is our motion and a second to approve the closed session consent items.
So moved.
By Mr. Connor, second, Mr. Segal. Sure.
Second, sure.
Okay. Are there any items that Board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration?
Yes. 11F through I.
11F through I. Okay. Any others? Now I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the items not pulled.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. Scavano.
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough.
Yes.
Mr. Segal.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, two absent.
Now I'll take a motion and a second to approve the resolutions under 11F through I.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Segal. Second. Second by Mr. Dixon. Questions or discussion? Okay. Thinking none. I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the resolutions to, for F through I under 11.
Mr. Scavano.
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough.
F through I. Termination of the Spanish.
Yes.
She said yes.
Mr. Segal.
Yes.
Mr. Connor.
Abstain.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
The motion passes with four yeses, two absent, and one abstain.
Okay. Now we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Jarrett.
I'd like to cede my time to Bridget French from Alignment Rockford to give her quarterly update for Alignment Rockford. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Bridget French. I'm the executive director of Alignment Rockford, here for our quarterly update for second quarter of 2017. As you are aware, the Alignment Rockford working teams support the greatest strategic needs of Rockford Public Schools. In 2016, Alignment Rockford, in partnership with Rockford Public Schools, received a grant from ConnectEd called the Great Lakes College and Career Pathways Initiative. And that work really aligns to the three strands of Ford Next Generation Learning, which is transforming teaching and learning, transforming the secondary school experience, and transforming business and civic engagement. Some of the funds from the Great Lakes grant were used to host the Academy Showcase, which took place on April 27th. That event was created to drive volunteerism to our academy support teams, which all, which there are 17 in all of our high schools, all five of our high schools. That event created 30 new volunteers for our academy support teams. But I would say that the greatest outcome of that event really was the internal and external awareness of what our students are doing, what our students are capable of, and what, what academies really look like. I, I think one of the biggest takeaways for me and, and for many people that I heard really impacted by the event was that all kids had a place that they, they felt that they belonged, and that, that's really evident in the work of our academies. As a reminder, the Great Lakes College and Career Pathways partnership consists of four communities around the Midwest, Rockford being one of the four, and the total grant funds to Rockford Public Schools from this grant is $360,000.
Yes.
The, part of the work that we continue to focus on is data tracking and looking at how we better measure articulated and dual credit that our students are receiving, industry certifications, and how are we tracking and meeting the college and career readiness benchmarks? And of course, working in partnership with Dr. Munson and the Continuous Improvement Department on that. Also, in our last update, you heard that we had trained 130 teachers and eight teacher trainers in project-based learning, and the boot camp that was conducted last week was actually conducted by those teacher trainers. So it's really great to see that work come full circle. Towards the end of this week, we continue our long-range planning for academies and our work around creating the profile of a graduate. The profile of a graduate is creating a common language for our educators, our parents, our students, and our community around what do we want our students to be able to know and demonstrate upon graduation from Rockford Public Schools. This is a really busy graphic of the process that we're using to create the profile of a graduate. So where it says draft by core team, that's the state that we're in right now. We are in about the third month of this process. The next, the next phase will be vetting out the core graduate statements, and then the last phase will be working with Mr. Dotson and his communications team to determine the best way to communicate this to families, students, and our community. In our last update, we talked about connected pathways and working with our PS205 and creating an on-ramp connecting to the three-course sequence in grades 10 through 12, connecting to industry certifications and post-secondary opportunities, and then connecting to employment opportunities in our region. We've been working with our industry council of firefighters and police officers, doing a lot of data and research on what's already taking place and happening. This is an example of a service map for the Rockford Fire Department. All of the schools that they're currently engaged in, they've engaged over 20,000 students in the last five years. So part of our work is determining what students are they reaching, and more importantly, what students are they not reaching, to ensure that all students will have career awareness opportunities to think about these careers and connecting them in that on-ramp work. We've also started working with our healthcare partners and looking at what types of jobs exist in our region, and what are the educational attainment levels that students will need in order to obtain those jobs in our region, and what kinds of industry certifications can our students obtain to give them a leg up when they graduate from Rockford Public Schools. So this is just a couple examples of some of the, the work and the time that our teams have worked, put a lot of effort and energy into to make sure that we're really creating opportunities for all students. The next pathways that we are focusing on include engineering and business, so you'll hear more about that in our fall update. Shifting gears a little bit, I want to talk a minute about what our Healthy Starts team is working on. That is the team that focuses on birth to five. And as in all alignment teams, we look at what is the need that is not being fulfilled? And right now, we're focusing on communication and access. So how do we better provide communication around the importance of early childhood and how to access early childhood for all families? We're working with a variety of partners in the community to work on three areas that subcommittees have been formed around. The first one is around case management, and you may be aware that Transform Rockford and Goodwill have determined, or created, excuse me, a community of practice for case managers, where there are over 300 case managers for social services in the city of Rockford. And so creating a community of practice for those caseworkers around best practices. And so our team, for Healthy Starts, is looking at connecting to that group and helping provide them communication and information about best practices, quality, high-quality early childcare programming for all students, so that when they come to kindergarten, they will be kindergarten-ready. So that's, that's an information-sharing partnership. And the second is around programming with play groups. We've done a lot of research about the effectiveness of home visiting, that there's such a positive impact that that makes on families, but some of the barriers to home visiting is that not all families feel comfortable having a caseworker in their home. And so taking the home visiting model and applying that to common areas, and partnering with the Rockford Housing Authority to bring a similar program model to where the families are already, connecting them to quality programming that already exists, but just aligning it to the families that need it the most. And the third area is a team that's working on a common form. This is something that is an absolute barrier to families when they have to go to multiple social services and continue to fill out the same forms over and over again, providing the same information. It can often be a deterrent to obtaining much-needed services. So we're working with the Department of Human Services, Winnebago County Health Department, and multiple other partners in creating a common form for families to access that will be both paper and electronic. And obviously, we'll need to connect that to some sort of system. All of those pieces are, are working and coming together at this time. And then lastly, a reminder of a couple upcoming events. Our Academy Expo will take place October 4th at the Indoor Sports Center out at the Mercy Health Sports Court II for all our PS205 freshmen. And the next Board of Education update for Alignment Rockford will take place on Tuesday, August 22nd. With that, I welcome any questions you might have at this time.
Mr. Connor.
Not really questions, but comments first. Great job. Alignment has really come a long way, and the tying in with Ford Next Generation and all the engagement locally with business is really wonderful to see. This is a great job. Especially, I have to say, I keep looking at that pathway pipeline, and that's one of the most exciting things we have going for us. And one of the concepts is, of course, to make sure that the training really reaches down into the elementary level. So personally, that's one of my goals, and I know Mr. Escobedo and I have talked about this, and I'm sure you're all tired of us talking about coding and engineering skills in the elementary schools, but it's a wonderful opportunity. Again, you all have done a great job, and it really is exciting to see the level of engagement when you talk to folks out in the business community. So I really think no one should really underestimate what a critical building block this is to both increasing our achievement and really making sure that we are providing the opportunities for all children. This, this is really a great step. So again, good progress. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Just great job on the April event. I attended. It was fun. It was energetic. I appreciate the fact that we actually got 30 new volunteers out of it. That's even...
It's a great start.
That's a great start. So I think it was a very well-planned event, and the, and the singing and dancing was great, you know? So that was a fun...
Auburn, Auburn capo.
The Auburn capo.
They really brought their A-game.
Did a great...
Volunteering.
Okay. So, and I knew all the songs because it was from my era, you know? So, but, yeah, you know, the, the one, I, I think about how often we, and think of where is our, you know, besides teachers, you know, we need, and the pathways for teachers, but, you know, I've been on this board, I don't know, how long has it been? Six years. And, you know, we are looking for SLPs all the time, and we're contracting out SLPs all the time. And I, I know it's probably not a lot of people, but we sure have a high demand for SLPs that we can't fill. So just raising awareness...
Can you define the acronym SLP?
Speech, speech and language pathologists.
Thank you.
Okay. It just seems like, you know, we, we end up with contracted people because we can't recruit anybody, you know? I know, Colleen, how many SLPs do we have?
We have 55 and 15.
Okay. So it's probably not a huge number when you think of it compared to teachers, but it's just, I mean, I can't think of a board meeting where we haven't had to approve somebody's contract for speech, you know? So anyway, just a thought.
Well, it's always evolving, and we will certainly keep that in mind.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Great job. Thank you. We appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on then to Ed Committee reports. Ms. McCullough, the Ed Committee report.
Hi. No committee report. We have not met, but we do have people who are applying to be on there, and that's pretty darn exciting.
Yeah, great.
Yay, new blood.
Good. And I, and is the application period is now over, right, for that? It was the ninth, was it?
The ninth was the end of the application for all the committees?
Yep.
Yeah. Thank, yeah. And we are not meeting in June, actually, so we are taking this month to kind of re, what's the word? When we put ourselves together, reconstitute, retool? Do we tool people? Well, anyways, we're going to put together a great new committee, and we'll be together again on July 19th, is it, Matt? I believe. It'll be the third Tuesday in July. Thank you.
Mr. Rollins is here. Is there any update from Finance Committee? Mrs. Thorne, maybe you could give that.
There actually wasn't a quorum at the Finance Committee for June, so it was canceled.
Okay. Operations, Mr. Connor.
Operations did meet in this room on June 6th at 6:30. In that, we have a number of items that came forth tonight. One is the separation from Cronos, from Mr. Zetiker, and the feedback on that one was good. There was another item from Operations about outsourcing some retiree administration, and there was a lot of pushback, and the administration is going to... and there was a lot of pushback, and the administration is going to, I think, rethink and come back. Another item, there is a proposed land sale, which was not on tonight, so I'm hoping that that will be on the 27th. And I may ask if we could do that in one reading and vote on it, because that was supposed to be tonight, and I know sometimes these things split to the crack. But that one, again, was met with a lot of support. Then the last, and just can't talk about it enough, the custodial bid did come before Ops, and I will not, we, you think we've talked about it enough? So, I will just say that there was a lot of discussion at Operations on that. Then the other items were, there was a facilities master plan update, and it seems, again, like things are going well. I think the only caution flag is regarding the new school to replace Kishawaki and Nelson. And I just want to give people a heads up that there are some issues on that from the state level that may cause us delay, and that is something that Mr. Schmidt and the facility staff is dealing with. So, that was the only downside. Other than that, we did have the groundbreaking that came about this last week, and that was covered quite well, and we were very pleased with that. And it looks like we're making good progress and that that's on track for the 1819 school year. Thanks to Mr. Dotson and his group for, after many fits and starts, trying to go out there when the ground wasn't going to sink all of us down 10 feet. So, we did find a date. So, I appreciate all the effort that he went through on that. On the Operations Committee's schedule, we are altering it slightly because it shows us meeting July 4th. And I don't know, Mr. Schmidt, did we come up with a date on that yet? Have we heard from the... So, tentatively, right now, the next committee meeting will be on July 10th at 6:30 in this room. And the only other thing is, those of you planning ahead, we really were not going to meet on January 2nd, so, next year. So, we'll have to come out with an alternate date for those of you who are, can't wait with bated breath, really, to come out to Ops. I know it's a good time for all. So, that's our report.
What was the one about the...
It's not on. No. That's why I said that was essentially closed. So, I just want to share that the best picture from the groundbreaking at the Cherry Valley site was a golden shovel in the ground with a little six-month-old sitting next to the shovel, whose parents, this little boy, I think his name was David, is going to...
Andrew.
Andrew, was it? Okay. Is going to go to that school in five years, you know, or whatever. So...
And his mom is a teacher at Rolling Green, and comes from a family of teachers. So, we're hoping we've got the next generation on that pathway. So, we've got a, and just to say that her mom was up for those Excel rewards, she's at her award, she's at Rolling Green. So, it was very nice to catch that family there. And by the way, I did neglect to say thank you to all the families that came from Whiteswan, Cherry Valley, and Thompson. There was a lot of community there, including Cherry Valley. So, forgot to say thank you to all of them for attending.
So, she promised us that she'd take a picture on his first day of school, five years from now, so that we could see...
Under the shelves.
There you go.
That's right.
All right. Let's move on to action items. Our first action item is Board Policy 4.80. This is the accounting and audits policy revisions that Mrs. Thorne presented. Is there a motion and a second to approve this?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Siegel. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, let's call the roll then on Item 16A.
Mrs. McCullough? Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, two absent.
The next action item is 16B, which is the Resolution to Regulate Expense Reimbursement. This is presented by Mrs. Thorne. Is there a motion, a second, to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Siegel. Any questions or discussion? Thank you. Have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of Item 16B.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, two absent.
Next item is 16C, which is the Auburn JROTC Fallen Hero Project that Mr. Schmidt presented. Is there a motion and a second to approve this?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Siegel. Any questions or comments? Please call the roll then on the approval of Item 16C.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, two absent.
Next item is 16D, which is the Unite Private Networks that Mr. Schmidt presented. Is there a motion and a second to approve this?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Siegel. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Okay. Have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of Item 16D.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, two absent.
Thank you. We're now on to new business. Mrs. Cyrus is going to present Teaching Strategies, Inc.
Good evening. Thank you. This proposal that I'm bringing forward to you is for a four-day training, July 31st, August 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. It is for, 45 people will attend the training on the four days. It is for our self-contained programs for kids with social and emotional disabilities and the staff that work in those programs. So, it will affect teachers and peer professionals, school psychologists, school social workers, school principals from kindergarten through 12th grade, where our programs reside. And the focus for this is to provide a classroom management, program management system that's positive in nature, and that it's the same tenants that are available, that we're teaching children from kindergarten through 12th grade. So, when they change schools from 5th grade to 6th grade, and then from 8th grade to 9th grade, they don't have to learn a whole new program, especially for children that that's their area of struggle. So, this is the beginning of professional development for these classrooms. We want to come forward next with social and emotional training, but that's after this. So, this, once again, is a four-day training. About 45 staff will attend.
And the cost is $19,815.
Yes. And it's $3,000 a day, and I just did quick math. That's $66 per person per day, which is a fairly reasonable cost.
Any discussion or questions for Mrs. Cyrus? Not? This will be presented at our next board meeting on June 27th for a vote. Mr. Tasky, you're up next with the Decision Ed Data Warehouse Software Application.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here alongside with Kelly Munson and Margaret Ryan, who's the Executive Director of Technology Services, to talk to you tonight about an initiative that we started roughly about two years ago, and that is the needs assessment and subsequent request or proposal for the data warehouse. The data warehouse initiative supports strategic plan goal for Strategy 8. And just to go through the process that we followed, we put together an extensive RFP in April of 2016. We had seven vendors who responded to that RFP. We had a committee of 17 staff from various departments, all the way down to the teacher level, who participated in those evaluations. And from that point, we selected two vendors that we felt were finalists that would meet our needs in terms of providing a data warehouse solution. Those two finalists were Decision Ed and VersaFit. We brought both vendors in and had them participate in onsite demonstrations, so the staff and committee can see what each vendor had to offer and how they would fit our organization. We also did site visits to school districts that had implemented and have been using those solutions for multiple years. We went through an Ed Services presentation recently in April, and we also vetted the system and selection process through the new RPS 205 change process. So, our current state is, we have a lot of reporting platforms. We have data in disparate applications, and in some instances, data silos, where teachers and staff create data models within Excel spreadsheets that are saved off in different places. Our goal is really to tie that all together, which brought the needs for the data warehouse to light. We have various software applications that have limited reporting capabilities. Some applications have data in them that we need, you know, basic demographic data, and other systems have student assessment data, and the goal then is to try to pull all that together. And in order to do that at the same time, a data warehouse can help meet those needs for us. So, our future state, which we are looking for Decision Ed to solve and help us partner up with, is creating a single repository for reporting and data dashboard needs aligned with our district strategic plan, a reduction in report development time, which can be significant depending upon the request, and connecting those various student systems, tying together our student data, our financial data, and special ed data, all in one application to report from. The Decision Ed platform has over 700 reports, data dashboards, alerts, and notifications from day one after implementation. Just to kind of give you an idea of the timing that it takes to develop a report and the cost, most reports take anywhere from 2 to 20 hours to develop at a third-party consultant rate of $150 to $200 per hour. This would also give us the ability to convert our existing reports. From 2010 until now, we've probably developed close to or near 100 reports in our current system. So, to give you an idea of scope and how much development has been done on this platform over the years to give us really a finished product. Decision Ed currently is deployed in 200 school districts covering 16 states, supporting over a million students. They have a history of large-scale, successful deployments. They also have solutions in 12 different Illinois school districts. Of those, about half also implement and use the same student information system that we do, which will also provide for an easier implementation, since the vendor is very knowledgeable about that system. Initial purchase price cost is $253,500, which, this initial price is about 40% less than the other finalists that we reviewed. This includes all activities and deployment, deployment activities, current historical, data integration, state and local assessment loading, and then future upgrades at no cost as well as training. And then, our annual support maintenance after the first year would be $50,700. Our current timeline would be set up in configuration during this summer. Towards the end of summer, we would be working with a vendor to go through the decision process of what we're going to bring in and how we're going to phase that process in, starting with our student data, our financial data, and then moving on from there. And we also have a phased implementation approach, so that we would roll it out to a pilot or core group to make sure that we get everything right before we roll it out district-wide for all staff, teachers, and so on. Any questions?
Mr. Connor, oh, Mr. Siegel.
Connor was up first.
I don't care.
Okay. Well, this is, of course, nerd moment writ large, so thank you very much. It does seem like two years...
You're on the clock, by the way.
I know. That's right. It does seem like it's taken 20 years, not two. Just saying. But we're here, thankfully. Just, the background, one thing I think is really important is, we've had a lot of requests over the four years I've been here for data that is easy to get in little, small, tiny pieces, but hard to bring together. And that is one of our strategic goals, and I know you've got it written in here, so I'm appreciative of that. I think one of the suggestions I've got, and I haven't had as much time to put into this as I'd like, is I would recommend that even though it went to Ed Committee, which I totally understand because of the educational needs, I think that maybe on an ongoing basis, in addition to baby-giving reports there, I think operationally, it makes sense to go to Operations Committee on the running of this. And so, maybe there's, if it's a yearly, I don't think you have to make it a huge deal, but I think how it's running and how this plan is going might be more appropriate for the Ops Committee to do some of that detailed work. So, I'd volunteer, that's something to consider. You don't have to, but I think that would make a lot of sense. I did look at the list of subject areas in the one write-up in the software or the solution license agreement, and I think there's a lot of good things there. One thing that would help me just, and maybe you've got it, if you had a diagram on how all that visually is going to go in. Because I think when you look at all the dimensional aspects around history, and there's probably some kind of integration rules, I'm assuming, I know, again, I think on the Ops level, that would be good to know, is what exactly does that mean? Because I know on some of this, you've got the plan as you show it by the student information system, which is, how quickly, we forget, again, its age, what's the name of our provider?
East School Plus.
Yeah. And so, we've got that, and then we've got the assessment systems. And I assume there's more integration with assessment systems, that that's probably maybe a little more custom, just because it's different formatting, and they're all kind of different, probably not a standard interface. And then, obviously, the payroll, et cetera, is probably fairly straightforward. And then, the additional third-party apps, again, you're going to have more custom. So, one of the things I'd like to see on the dashboard side is at least a plan about what kinds of cross-referencing you can do. And one of the things we've talked about over time is, we've talked at our quarterlies to talk about things like, should we have essentially what the educational investment is and how it relates to achievement and so forth? So, I think there are definitely some things that are going to cross-reference there. And I think if we had a map on some of those, because 900 reports or whatever that number is, is quite a bit. So, I think just seeing what, you know, how those things are going to come together in the plan off of this would be really helpful, because I think, obviously, we've been waiting for this for a while. So, understanding which pieces of the dashboard, you know, in what order, what can we expect? Because I'm assuming things like the assessments and the student information is going to be the core of what we want right away, and then we're going to add to it. So, I would just like to recommend, again, I would say maybe reviewing with Ed Committee that kind of output, but the actual operations, not trying to make more work for you, but I think that would make sense. So, again, good work. Glad that we're at this point, and as soon as I see some output. And maybe in the future, if we got some Tableau or some equivalent, which, by the way, for the non-nerd, is a visualization tool or equivalent, which you're all going to love. Trust me. Hearing about it, you're not going to like it, but when you see it, it's really very effective.
I'm not doing it justice.
Yeah. It's really, so I can't wait for that part of it, to be honest. So, again, thanks. And then, just, if we could follow up on some, at some point on that.
Mr. Siegel.
I'm always curious when a vendor is so much lower in his bid versus the other vendors. And I see that this was, they're 40% less than the other finalists. What accounted for that?
Well, I think a lot of Decision Ed and the implementations that they've done have driven costs down a little bit. Indian Prairie is also a district that is very similar in size to us, as well as demographic in terms of software applications. They are also in the East School District. So, there's some similarities there that I think have driven costs down for the platform itself. But also, the Versatech or VersaFit application also included modules and applications that we didn't need, things that we already had implemented, like an assessment and curriculum tool. And there's no need to purchase those pieces when we already have them in-house.
Dr. Munson, my question is to you, so, this will be a tool that will use data to drive...
So this will be a tool that will use data to drive decisions and processes for improvement, I'm assuming, so...
Correct.
You're all okay with that?
Yes, actually, and that's why I'm here. We've partnered on this across our teams as well as the technology to ensure the consistency of the applications. We're excited because we're already having conversations about what will be in those dashboards. And the Board of Ed will have a dashboard which will be aligned to our strategic plan. So this is pulling the data and having it readily available so we could get away from building and talking more about application of data and use of data, and not just at the district level, also at the school level. So we're excited and supported on that.
Ms. McCullough?
So it came to Education Committee in January of 2016. The Ed Services presentation in April of 2017 was...
Part of that was we have a new change process that we're going to talk about in-depth on Saturday. And part of what we're now requiring is any type of initiative that comes through is vetted through our organization. And the first stopgap is through the Ed Services so that we can look at departmental impact, district, both integration of services and programs, but also longevity to ensure that any initiative we now bring forth has sustainability. And so we vetted this through that. And actually, what was exciting about that meeting is we went from the conversation of integration to the conversation of application, and we've already started to develop the idea for some of our dashboards.
I guess my question would be 18 months later, whatever you brought to Ed Committee and all the process that you went through, is there a reason you didn't come back?
Yeah.
The update as to...
I don't think there was necessarily a specific reason. I mean, the goal was really to get it in front of as many stakeholders as possible. You know, we look at this from a technology side as a strategic partnership with every department. You know, the data that we provide is really funneled through our department to everyone in our organization, including what you heard earlier with Great Lakes. We provide a tremendous amount of data for that initiative, and our goal is to do it quicker and more accurately as we move forward.
And so this, what are we going to be looking for, because I'm not, I'm not the nerd, I guess, I don't know. I'm not as technologically advanced as Mike is. But the, what are we going to be looking for down the road to determine or that it's meeting what we need, if there's additional that we need, if there, you know, what kind of metrics? And I don't know that Ed Committee's the place to go for that. I heard somebody say you would bring it there. We need to go to the right audience to know that they're, that it's giving the information that they need or cross-referencing or however it is that we... So do we have some sort of metrics to decide that it's meeting our needs?
We will. We'll have the ability to see who's logging in using the application, which we don't have that currently. We also don't have report creation or reports available to our teachers at an ad hoc basis. So if a teacher wanted to provide a birthday list, you know, to maybe a teacher's assistant in the classroom, they're not really able to do that now. And we want to be able to put those tools in the hands of our educators, and this provides us with a means to do that right off the bat.
Another way to measure that is also the accessibility of data. And right now, it is we have a large lag time from the time of request to the time that we can get that usable data in front of people. And because this is updated on a daily basis, we'll have immediate access to data. And so that goes anything from teacher requests on data to FOIA requests to any other requests that are related to our strategic plan. At this point in time, we don't have a platform right now, so we have to create or seek those results, and we should have that data readily on hand. It'll also give us the ability to see longitudinal data in one platform. So that's another assessment.
One of the things, if I might say, on that, and because it's a really good question, is the example I'd use is that at some future point, as you're looking at assessment data, and let's just say it's on math or whatever, it's easier for you to pull in the history of that particular student and look at how they've tracked, if there were blips, you know, before, what their patterns are, how they've done. You could do testing, the assessments, you could line up all kinds of things that today you'd have to manually do this. This could now be structural. From my point of view, you could have standard information-ready packets for all the teachers at the beginning of the school year, show how they've done, where they're struggling, and then as you add, you know, either, you know, at the elementary level, I know they don't have so much quizzes, but, you know, some of the testing they've done and so forth. So the integration of that, and what I'm hoping for frankly, is that as we have tools, you know, and I'm not picking on Tableau because it does matter what tool, you can do heat maps, which allows you to see across your class, you know, the kids that are struggling, say, with language, some kids are struggling with math, et cetera. And you can see that, and as you come up with your lessons, lesson plans, you can target that group and see what the issues are, maybe set up better either interventions. You could have behavior data on top of it. So that's why I say cross-referencing is probably one of the most valuable pieces to this, and the more visual it is, I think it's the more actionable. And that actually, one of the things we look at in particular is we're starting to look at really predictive modeling and that kind of thing and analytics as we apply it for us on product and customer. Here, that could be on either student groups or schools, groups of schools, and it would be much easier to see, you know, issues of, let's say, staffing and other kinds of things, again, interventions, et cetera. So my view is that the more you've got, that's what we call a 360 view of student and, you know, various teachers, and you could do the same for teachers, schools, really by budget, all kinds of things. So that's, from my point of view, the exciting part that might answer at least some of that. Nerd alert. Mrs. McCullough?
So to convert, this is again, a lack of knowledge on my part, but to be able to convert existing reports to the platform, somebody has to do that, though. It's not that you can, it recognizes the report and puts it in, right? It's, I mean, this is a data entry sort of piece, right?
So the data is really our data. It currently exists, and we've written a lot of reports off of that current data set. The goal is, we don't want to lose the progress we've already made with the system that we're, you know, planning to purchase and implement. I've been told that the vendor is one of the best vendors that districts have ever worked with in terms of implementation, and that isn't just data warehouses, that is overall in any application that they've ever implemented, which speaks extremely highly of this vendor and the team behind it and what they do as part of the implementation process. Their goal is to get our data in their system and make sure that we're validating it so that we get off on the right foot. It's no different than a house, making sure that the foundation is solid before we move forward and get it in the hands of our users.
But we have to get that information into the system. So it's our people that will have to do that, it's not you.
Correct. We will partner with the vendor to ensure that that happens.
It's a data flow. If I might say, I think this is a good point. This is why I always ask about integration effort, because in this case, it's not your, in one sense, it's not like somebody has to type in and end report. If you've got the core data, let's say that you've got tracking of people's grades or attendance or whatever, if you've got the raw data, I think the point here is that's what you're pulling in and so you could recreate it. It's not like somebody has to sit down and type all that data. You might have to format it, and there are some other things, but if you've got the source data, that's the conversion part, and that's the integration. So that's why I'm hoping that the integration and recreation of this, as we walk through, we can see the plans. That's why I asked upfront if we could map the data dashboards. Then you could target certain subject areas and see if we've got the data or if you're missing it, whether we take the, either the conversion, integration, whether it's needed.
And we do have, our vendor is here with us today, so if you wanted to see a visualization of what that would look like, a platform would look like, that might help. I don't know if we want to do that now or if we want to show that at some point, just to give a better visualization of the end product. So that is, that's available.
Well, this will be presented at our board meeting, and I would say that if we have questions or thoughts you want to share, Mr. Tasky is the contact person or Dr. Munson. So, thank you. All right. Our next item is administration is requesting the board to suspend the rules to consider the following item, as Cronus will not begin any work until there is a signed contract. In order to hit the starting date of July 1st, Cronus will need to sign contract by June 16th, which is Friday, I'm thinking. Getting the signed contract to them by the 16th allows us to stand track to complete the project in the middle of August. So this is the, so I need a motion and a second to go in to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor. Second. Any questions or discussion on that? Not, we'll call a roll on the motion to go to suspend the rules.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
You betcha.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, two absent.
So now I need a motion and a second to approve the motion.
So moved.
Second by Mr. Dixon. Any questions or discussion on that? You want a presentation, too?
I have it.
All right, let's do it.
We did do it at, we did do it at Ops.
Right?
Yeah, this was the...
Yep. All right, all right. Any...
We have fully vetted, we have fully vetted it as an Ops presentation.
All right, okay, good. This is, this went to Ops. That's why I said in my committee review...
Right.
That the feedback here was good and that the plan was good. I think the only thing in full disclosure is we did talk about some of the issues with Cronus upfront, but we are keeping them as a vendor. So I think it's important for everybody to understand that they still, on the timekeeping and the rest are good. It's just the HRIS itself is we're going to the new vendor. So are there any questions for Mr. Zetaker on anything? No, then I have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the motion that's on the floor.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses, two absent.
All right, our next item is Board Policy 2.125, Board of Education Board Member Expenses.
Oh, yeah.
Take out circus.
So moved.
So, okay. Mrs. Oldley, you want to present this?
I think there is some question about the definition of circus.
Okay.
But I had received some informal feedback to take out the term circus in the, in the policy as an entertainment option, but this policy actually reflects the statute and in the language...
It's old school.
Yes, and the language includes the term circus, so I didn't take it out. I left it in only because it reflects the exact statutory language. But it does mirror what resolution that you have now adopted, and so we are bringing forward the policy changes and the resolution will be attached as an addendum.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Oldley?
So is it staying in or leaving?
It's staying in.
It's staying in, yeah. So this will come to a vote by the board on June 27th. Any other business for tonight? I just want to remind board members that we have Saturday, June 17th, at start, starting at 8:15, for our strategic planning meeting at the boardroom on the fourth floor of Swoosh American. So be there or be square, right?
Right, and we're going to have a special addendum from 8:15 to 8:25.
That's right.
So we're going to get started right away, based on tonight's meeting.
Okay. So if not, there is no other business, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. All those same sign, we are adjourned at 9:00 PM.